Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 17, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session on state legislation and property tax reforms' impact on city revenue.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for July 17, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is state legislation, property tax reform, impact on city revenue. I will turn it over to Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jennifer Larson, Chief Finance, Financial Officer for the City of Dubuque. Tonight, I'll be presenting on House File 718, the new property tax law that was signed into law this past legislative session. So there are quite a few changes that I'll be walking through. I won't read all these tiles since we'll be talking about these in detail, but there's everything from levy consolidation to a levy limit based on property tax valuation growth, all the way down to increases in military service exemption and a new homestead exemption for ages over 65-plus. But I'll just dive in to each of these categories. So first up is probably the most complicated, and that is the levy consolidation and then the adjusted city general fund levy. So the first question is what levies are combined that cities use? So all these levies on this slide are being combined into what is known as what cities use as a general fund levy, which carries a maximum levy of $8.10 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. And I won't read all of these levies that are being combined. City of Dubuque does not use any of the levies that are being combined, so we are not impacted by the legislation. So some of the larger cities that are using these levies are listed here. So Waterloo, for example, they're using the cultural and scientific, supporting the library levy. That's a popular one. Council Bluffs, they have an own civic center using that levy. Davenport, again, supporting public library levy. Cedar Rapids has the instrumental music groups and then the Memorial Building levies. Iowa City, again, support public library. And then Sioux City has the most non-owned civic center, owned civic center, instrumental music groups, and symphony orchestra. So their levies will be combined into their general fund 810 levy. Levis not included in the adjusted city general fund levy limitation. We have debt service, pensions, employee benefits, operations and maintenance of municipal transit, aviation authority, tort and self-insurance, capital improvement reserve fund, support for local emergency management commission, emergency services district, and then the levy to exceed a maximum amount set in code. However, there's newly defined parameters. So the ones in bold are the ones that the City of Dubuque uses, so debt service, pensions, employee benefits, transit, tort, and self-insurance. Important timing notes with this legislation. So fiscal year 2024 will be our baseline of the adjusted city general fund levy, and then fiscal year 2025 is the first annual adjusted city general fund levy that we'll be calculating. Fiscal year 2025 through 2028 is when the levy limit calculation is limited to this period, so this impacts cities that use those other levies that are being combined to the 810 levy limit. So they have through those years to be above the 810 levy limit, and then in fiscal year 2029, they have to adjust down to the 810 levy limit. Another note here, the assessment process usually applies every other year for most properties, so for that reason, growth rates might vary year to year. Jumping into calculating the new adjusted city general fund levy, so this kind of walks through how you go through the calculation. So the first step is you find the city's non-TIF taxable value, including gas and electric, but excluding ag land and ag buildings for fiscal year 2024. So that is the fiscal year we're in now, the budget we just completed. That will be our base budget, that base values. And then the next step is finding the city's non-TIF taxable value, again, including gas and electric, excluding ag land and ag building for fiscal year 2025. So once we know our valuations for 2025, we can get those values. And then we would calculate our growth rate by taking the difference between step two and step one, and then dividing by step one. So that's how we'll compute that growth rate. If we were a community that had combined, had to combine those other levies into our general fund levy, we would do step three and merge those into the existing general fund levy. However, that does not apply to the City of Dubuque. So this new legislation provides a mechanism for the levy rate to be reduced if non-TIF taxable growth triggers are met or exceeded. The goal is to bring all levies back under or to the $8.10 maximum general fund rate over time. So by fiscal year 2029, those cities must be within the $8.10. And then it reduces the levy by constraining growth by 2% or 3% each year, depending on the trigger hit. So we just went through the calculations. So if we computed our non-TIF taxable growth was under 3%, there would be no reduction to our growth rate. If we computed it was over 3% but less than 6%, we would have to apply a 2% reduction factor to our taxable valuation. And then if we computed a growth over 6%, we would apply a 3% reduction factor to our taxable valuation. So in words, this is what that formula essentially looks like. It's taking the current year city general fund levy requested dollars, so fiscal year '24 requested dollars divided by the current year non-TIF taxable times the reduction percentage times 1,000, which gives you the budget year city general fund levy rate. And then you would take that calculated rate times the budget year non-TIF taxable divided by 1,000, and that equals your budget year city general fund levy revenue, which is pretty confusing. But I've put it together in this chart to show if this legislation was in effect for the past 10 years, what the impact would be. So looking back to fiscal year 2015 and looking at the change in our non-TIF taxable valuation excluding ag, in 2015, we had a percent change in valuations of 3.64%. So in that year, we would have been limited by this legislation, and we would have lost just over $360,000 in tax revenue. And then the other years, we would have been impacted, our fiscal year 2018, where we saw a 5.37% increase, and we also saw that same increase in 2019. So 2018, we would have saw a loss of $379,458. In 2019, we would have saw just under an $800,000 loss. So three years out of the 10 years, the non-TIF taxable valuation grew more than 3% but less than 5.99%. So our general levy would have been reduced in 2015, 2018, 2019, and that would have been a total property tax revenue decrease of just over 1.5 million. So moving from the general fund levy, part of the tax legislation into homestead property tax credit and exemption, this impacts property owners 65 and older. So this is a new homestead exemption for property owners age 65 or older. It's in addition to the current homestead credit. Fiscal year 2025, it's an additional $3,250 additional exemption, and then in 2026, it goes up to $6,500. The current homestead credit will continue to be state-funded. However, the new 65 and older homestead exemption has no state reimbursement. And then also, just to note, the new 65 homestead exemption, that results in a reduction in our taxable value because it is an exemption against our taxable value. So this is on screen what the application looks like. So applications were due July 1st for fiscal year 2025. If the exemption is granted, it's allowed for future years without future filing as long as the claimant continues to qualify. So looking at calculating the impact on Dubuque, we have 18.9% of people in Dubuque, 65 and over, according to 2020 census data, estimated about 5,638 new exemptions for 65 and older. The average assessed value of a residential home in the City of Dubuque is $159,503. Fully implemented exemption would be $64.36 for the city share of property taxes in fiscal year '26. And fully implemented exemption would be $205.08 for all taxing bodies in fiscal year '26. So the estimated cost of the City of Dubuque in '26 is $345,484, which will not be funded by the state. Moving to military property tax credit exemption, so there is an increased exemption for military. So fiscal year 2024 and prior, there was a $1,852 credit funded by the state of Iowa. In fiscal year 2025, this increases to $4,000, and it changes to an exemption not funded by the state of Iowa. 2011 households currently receive the military service property tax credit, and so the estimated cost of the City of Dubuque in fiscal year '25 is $79,656. Again, this is not funded by the state of Iowa. And again, this is an exemption, so it results in a reduction in the city's taxable value. Moving to property tax abatement agreements and limits. So this is covered by Iowa Code Chapter 404, Urban Revitalization Areas. It requires minimum assessment agreements for commercial properties, and it applies to revitalization areas created in fiscal year 2025 and after. So it's applied to first-year exemption applications in existing revitalization areas filed July 1st, 2024, and after. Under residential, it prohibits property tax abatement for school district portion of revitalization areas for residential projects and beginning with revitalization areas created fiscal year 2025 and after. And again, first-year exemption applications in existing revitalization areas filed July 1, 2024, and after. So our current urban revitalization program in the City of Dubuque, it includes just over 7,200 properties and 1,801 acres. Applications for improvements in 2023 is due by February 1, 2024. The residential program includes a 10% increase in assessed value, 10 years of tax exemption on 100% of increased valuation. And then the commercial program is 15% increase in assessed value, three years of tax exemption on 100% of increased valuation. So we currently have 145 residential properties with exemptions, 42 multi-residential properties with exemptions, and the residential total current yearly savings is $87,843. Multi-residential total current yearly savings is $69,442. Also included in the legislation is transit funding, and this only impacts the City of Des Moines. So it allows the City of Des Moines to increase their franchise fees to 7.5% with any portion above 5% required to be dedicated to the Des Moines area regional transit authority, otherwise known as DART. Also included in the legislation is county auditor valuation reports. So these began fiscal year 2026. So they must provide valuation reports that distinguish between revaluation or other types of addition to the value within the abstract that they provide to the state and the taxing Moving to local government budgets, specifically the taxpayer statements. Under this legislation, by March 15th, cities must file a report with the Iowa Department of Management containing information specified by the new law to be contained in the mailings. And then by March 20th, the county auditor must send each property owner or taxpayer with the county, within the county by regular mail, an individual statement with the specified information broken out by the political subdivision comprising the taxpayer's district. So those statements must include the total current year tax rate in dollars, the combined effective property tax rate for the district calculated using the sum of the current fiscal year's actual property tax certified for levy of all districts' levies, the proposed budget year tax rate in dollars, and then if the property tax dollars specified for the proposed budget tax rate in dollars exceed the current fiscal year's actual property tax dollars certified for levy. A detailed statement of the major reasons for the increase must be included, including specific purposes or programs for which the district is proposing an increase. There must be an example comparing the amount of property taxes on a residential property with an actual value of $100,000 in the current fiscal year and such amount on the residential property using the proposed property tax dollars for the budget year. And the same thing for a commercial property with an actual value of $100,000. And then the district's percentage of total property taxes certified for levy in the owner's or taxpayer's taxing district in the current fiscal year among all taxing authorities. The date, time, and location of the district's public hearing on the information contained in the taxpayer's statements. And then information on how to access the city's internet site, city's statements under the section, and other budget documents for the prior fiscal years. The city must hold a public hearing on the proposed property tax amounts for the budget year and new taxpayer statements, and this is in addition to the public hearing required to adopt the budget. It must be separate from any other meeting of City Council, including any other meeting or hearing related to the budget. City Council can decrease but not increase the proposed property tax amount to be included in the budget. And as part of this, because of all the requirements added, the budget certification deadline has been moved to April 30 instead of March 31. Moving to bond elections, this legislation is effective July 1, 2023, 2023 and after, and it's for elections on the questions of issuing bonds. So there's only one date going forward. It's the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Moving to bond financing, they did increase the limits effective July 1, 2024. There was a 30% increase to the limits for general corporate purpose referendum thresholds, and these will be adjusted by CPI factor for every January, beginning January 1, 2025. And also, we estimate of an annual increase in property taxes as a result of a bond issuance of a residential property with a value of $100,000 must be added to the notice of proposed action. And then the Department of Management is to issue a report on bond issuance to the General Assembly each December 1. So impacting Dubuque, our increase of the general obligation corporate threshold goes from $700,000 to $910,000. So this is what we could issue without holding a referendum for general obligation bonds. Annual finance report, there's some requirement changes here. So these are effective when we file December 1, 2025. We have to list our bonds, notes, other obligations issued by the city during the most recently completed fiscal year. And then it's also requiring us other fiscal years beginning on or after July 1, 2024 for any obligations that remain unpaid. And we have to list the amount of the issuance, the project or purpose of the debt, whether the issuance was approved at the election, eligible to be subject to a petition for an election, or if it was exempt from approval at the election. Looking at estimating what the total annual impact is to the City of Dubuque, so the adjusted general fund levy is variable. It depends on where our taxable valuations come in at compared to the base. So that is anywhere between $360,000 and $800,000, looking back at the past 10 years. The homestead tax exemption for 65 and older is about $350,000 when fully implemented. Military taxes exemption is about $80,000 when fully implemented. Urban revitalization, that is mostly a cost to the developer. Taxpayer statement mailing costs, according to the county, it is estimated to be about $12,000 to the city. So the total estimate is anywhere between $802,000 and $1242,000 impact of this legislation. So we've covered everything in the legislation, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we're putting up for questions. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Yeah, regarding the general obligation referendums, does that mean anything above $910,000? We now have to go and, unlike tonight, where we're doing a 6.2 bond, does that bond equivalent have to go to the November date, or is that a different?
No. So when we went through the public hearings for those, there were actually separate public hearings for the general obligation bonds. So the individual projects were actually less than the threshold for the referendum. The current threshold is $700,000. So the way bond council breaks it out is, you know, they will hold a public hearing for project $700,000 and under, and so we just hold multiple public hearings for each project. However, if it was one project larger than the new $910,000, yes.
Okay, so this $6 million bond that we have in front of us is broken down into projects less than or equal to $700,000 to meet this requirement?
For the GO.
For the GO.
Portion, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then there's also some urban renewal debt included in that $6 million, yes.
Okay. And then the revitalization areas, are those determined by whom?
So they are adopted by the council in an urban revitalization, urban plan, urban renewal plan. I didn't include that in this presentation, but it is on the city's website under the Housing Department. It's mostly the downtown area.
I just wanted to make sure that this was not superimposed on us by definition and that that is still local authority as to how we can do urban renewal, generally speaking.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This is quite a challenging document.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Resnick.
A couple of quick questions. So going back to Ms. Farber's question about if we were going to put on something like five flags, that would have to be in that, on that November date?
It depends on how the issuance is structured. So if it is issued as urban renewal debt, then it's subject to reverse referendum, so it would not be subject to public vote. It would only be if enough people petitioned prior to the issuance of bonds, then it would have to go to vote.
And did they issue a rationale for these changes? It's $1 million less to the City of Dubuque, so it seems like either they would like us to raise taxes, reduce services, or a combination of both. But my question to you is, I'm not going to ask you to guess, but did they issue a rationale with these changes?
So we were fortunate enough to, through our metropolitan coalition connections, to actually meet with both the Senate, the person in the Senate who was leading this effort and the person in the House. And what was explained to us was that they're receiving tremendous pushback about the increased assessed valuations that people are going to be experiencing because of the rise in valuations since the pandemic. And so they feel like they've made a lot of changes in state taxes, and now they feel they need to make them in taxes for local governments. And they also expressed that this isn't the end, that next year, they plan on coming back with looking at some more state taxes, but also looking at the local option sales tax that the city gets, and looking at tax increment financing, and looking even deeper at property taxes. So we don't know right now what that means, but probably not anything good for us.
Mike, thank you very much. I'm going to add something to that, Mr. Resnick, because that was a very thorough and diplomatic answer, and I appreciate it. But there was another rationale that was mentioned when the governor signed the bill. I mean, in her statement, she said, "The goal is to shrink local government." It said it out loud right there. So I think that's another thing that's an important addition to this and shouldn't be overlooked or understated in the conversation.
So thank you very much, everybody, for those answers. And so again, to shrink local government, I guess that means either raise taxes or reduce services or a combination of both. And I understand that many aspects of this are bipartisan, they have bipartisan support, and it's absolutely real when we have these real estate taxes. I mean, these real estate assessments go up so much. But it does seem like it, I mean, we haven't been trying to get as much as we can with these assessments as it is. Seems to me that we're always on the low end of assessments anyway because we're trying to keep our taxes down for our citizens. But I was surprised by the connection with TIF, that somehow they're reacting against this economic tool that has brought so many jobs and private investment into our area and other areas of Iowa. Is there, and you said there's an implied or specific reason that TIF is involved with this, that there is, they would like us to reduce TIF and thus reduce these development incentives that keep people coming and building in Iowa?
Yeah, a couple of things to unpack there, and Jennifer will correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, the idea of them saying the increase in assessed valuations is the reason to go in and make these changes, they already have a mechanism. It has existed for years, which is the equalization order that they issue, where right now, it's what, about 56%, I think, of residential property is subject to property tax, about 56% of the value? And basically, it's a 3% cap of the growth of assessed valuation. So while an individual property might go up more than that, generally across your community, you can't go, you can't grow more than 3% anyway. So they already have a control mechanism on the assessed valuations. I think that one time over the last many years, it was as low as about 45% of the assessed value of a residential property. And then I think it's been maybe as high as 60%, maybe? So it fluctuates all the time based on the, it's tied to the ag values. I mean, it's very complicated. But anyway, they already cap the growth of how much of a person's residential property you can apply the tax levy against. So it's, that already exists. On the tax increment financing, it's a really strange and difficult thing because, you know, our state's not growing, and if we expect it to grow, we need to have tools to help it grow. And tax increment financing is one of the local tools that we have. And tax increment financing is one of the local tools that we have. But you have both ends of the political spectrum. Conservatives believe that you shouldn't pick winners and losers in economic development. And liberals on the other end believe you shouldn't subsidize businesses, private businesses. And so those two parties come together, and as long as they can get some people in the middle to agree with them, they can bring about change in tax increment financing. And one of the incentives for others to agree with them is the state now replaces about 50% of the lost school, quote unquote, lost school revenue that is captured through tax increment financing. First of all, you have to remember, tax increment financing usually is incentivizing investment that wouldn't happen without the incentive. So that's why I had to sort of choke on the, say, lost revenue, because it's revenue that wouldn't have existed if you didn't use the incentive. But once you do use the incentive, so to minimize the impact on the school district, the state replaces 50% of the revenue that the school district doesn't get while it's captured in the TIF. I think that's about $60 million a year, if I remember correctly. And so the state sees a chance of bringing, reducing their expenditures by reducing the tax increment financing tool. And I just saw the Iowa Taxpayers Group, I get their monthly newsletter, and it's something like the Iowans for Tax Relief, I think that is what it is, ITR, Iowans for Tax Relief. And they were talking about the success of these changes of lowering the state income tax and things like that, and these changes to the local government. And they considered it a victory that the state of Iowa only, and this, the statistics they were using is from the IRS, where the IRS was saying, where do people file their income tax return from, their federal income tax return? And it only had dropped 1% in the state of Iowa. In other words, we'd lost 1% of our taxpayers. They considered that a victory. And you look at a lot of other states, and they're, and they're growing. And I guess I would consider that a victory if we were growing. So, you know, we'll be down there next year. I know Councilmember Rousseau is on the Iowa League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee, and Mayor Kavanaugh is on the Metropolitan Coalition Group and also participates in the Iowa League of Cities. And so we'll be down there advocating to not hurt tax increment financing. But we're also going to be advocating that they not hurt local option sales tax. What was our revenue last year? Was it about over $10 million from local option sales tax?
$12 million.
$12 million. So if they somehow hurt that in some way, I mean, it could be pretty dramatic for us.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rousseau.
Thank you. And Jennifer, I just have to say that we are incredibly fortunate to have someone of your caliber that can take this very complicated legislation and present it to us in a way that we can understand. And I do have a question. You mentioned the new tax statement that's due March 15th. And can you, can you help me better understand how that impacts our process? I wasn't quite sure what changes for us.
Sure. So by March 15th, essentially, we have to know what our tax, what our proposed tax levy is going to be for the new budget year. And then part of that information, then, we have to give the examples of the impact on the residential homeowner, the commercial homeowner, and then our percentage of total property taxes of all the taxing bodies. So that's part of the information that goes out to taxpayers. So by March 15th, essentially, that has to be decided, and then it's mailed to taxpayers. So that's, so we have to submit it to the Department of Management, and then the Dubuque County Auditor's Office is the one who actually mails out those statements.
So would that be based on, like, the first night of budget hearings, we set a rate of which we cannot go any higher? Is that the rate that we would use for those?
So this would actually, my understanding is this replaces, so there's a hearing held, and this new hearing would replace that maximum property tax dollar resolution hearing that we normally held. This would replace that in our process.
Okay, and then following that, then a mailing goes out to the?
By, by March 20th, yep.
Okay, okay. So that's why we have more time to finalize the budget?
Yeah, it's, it looks like more time, but I think it compresses the decision-making as far as what is the tax levy proposed, and then it's ultimately going out to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
In the middle of our budget process.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I want to follow up on that, Jennifer. So the, you said it compresses it. So it really does just replace, though, the former version of us setting the high, the property tax rate, correct?
Right, so depending, yeah, looking at the schedule, looking at how it fits in with our schedule when that decision can be made, then we have to, by March 15th, be able to supply the Department of Management all the required information, including the tax, proposed tax levy for the new budget year.
Okay. And is that a lot more than what we have had done at that point before?
So previously, it was just, what is the maximum proposed tax levy? I mean, in my opinion, it's, it's a little more sensitive because it's actually being mailed out to every individual taxpayer in the city. And then there's additional information that we have to provide. So I think there's like, I'm trying to look here, there's like nine, nine different information points we have to provide to the Department of Management.
So this is actually one of my questions. You know, we have till April 30th now. It used to be March 30, right? I mean, somewhere around there, we had to get everything done. So for our timeline for budgeting and the process that we go through, do we now need to be done with that before March 15th? Or can we have the budget hearings from March through April?
We could have the budget hearings from March until April.
Okay.
Yes.
But we just, so we are, it's still, it's similar in a lot of ways. It's just that there's more information that the state requires from us earlier in the process.
Yes.
Okay, I think I'm clear now. So are we thinking of adjusting our budget timeline? Is that what we're thinking in terms of our budget hearings, instead of, you know, we kind of tend to smash them into like a two-week period the last few years, and I'm just curious if we're going to be able to spread that out a little bit more?
Yes, I, we haven't really discussed it, but yes, I would see us spreading that out into April.
I think everybody here would appreciate that, and maybe everybody else could appreciate that, too. It's a very intensive process, but I mean, that's maybe one, one positive from all this, so that's good. Other questions, thoughts? So, do you want to go?
You know, I just want to make one comment. And second, what Ms. Rousseau said in appreciation for you and your office. I know that you do this shorthanded, too, and that we still need to fill positions in your department.
They've actually been filled.
Have they?
So, yeah, the budget manager started last week, and the finance manager started almost two weeks ago, so just.
Maybe you'll get a little more sleep during budget this year.
Yes, hopefully.
Okay, good. Well, and I just want to emphasize how this will impact, and really in speaking to taxpayers, a statement more, this will impact the people and the tools that we have for public safety. This will impact our arts and culture. This will impact our ability to have city input on historic preservation, overall services to our entire city. And in this trajectory, if we continue this way, I don't know how we can continue the quality of what we're able to do with the quantity of people we have. I really am concerned about this. And so I would truly just ask all of our citizens to consider this and speak to their state legislators regarding how this will impact our own city and our own community. And I know that's not a question for you, but I appreciate that this is going to impact how we do business moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Go ahead.
Just a thought, if we're about to wrap up the work session.
Uh huh.
Being that we are a little bit early, if council would like to vote to go into closed session now, we might be able to tick a few things off our list before the regular meeting starts at 6:30.
This is why you're the city attorney, Krenna. That's a fantastic idea. So before I entertain that motion, though, let me just, I do want to say a couple of things, and I'll try not to take too long, so we can go and do what Krenna just suggested. I appreciate this conversation, and Jenny, thank you very much for this presentation. I've been waiting to see this all put into one place. I think it's, you know, everybody was really, it was complicated trying to put all this together when this law first passed. I think there's something that needs to be recognized, and I hope people are watching this at home right now or get a chance to watch it later, because there's nobody else in this room right now. And that's not to say that, you know, I mean, people got stuff going on, I get it. But that's one of our biggest challenges here, is that this conversation occurs in the form of ideology in the state Capitol. And here is where we talk about reality, like what actually happens in people's lives. And that's the biggest challenge that we have here, because the, this, services cost money, and investment costs money. And the reality for Dubuque is that we're actually very fiscally responsible, thanks to you and your office, the city manager's office, and the city councils and the city councils before us. We're a really fiscally responsible city, we're mission-driven. That's one of the arguments that's being made, is that cities are having mission creep, they say. And we likely have, I think, the most comprehensive and transparent budget process in the entire state of Iowa. I would, I think it rivals anybody else's process. I've talked to other mayors and councils, nobody does what we do. They don't spend an entire month going through hours and hours and hours of this discussion. So in many ways, we're kind of, we've been responsible. And, and this is, the insinuation here is that cities aren't responsible, and that cities play with people's money and do things that are irresponsible. And I completely disagree with that statement. And I think it's really important that we start to ground this conversation in reality and that we get the message out in the best way that we can, that what this actually does is it runs the risk of curbing population growth, curbing investment, curbing the scope of services, and, and really curbing private development, private development, not government development, private development. And I don't see how that is good for a state, and especially the state that we live in and love. So I really hope that we can have a more reality-based discussion going forward and find some ways to do that, and find some ways to include more community members in the conversation, because it is, this is, this is a big deal. This, this path that we are on, I think, is dangerous for the state of Iowa in general, and we need to have a larger conversation about it. So thank you very much for putting this all together. I really do, we really do appreciate it. And I think I did leave us some time to be able to go and have a discussion. So I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session if someone wants to make it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Rousseau.
I move that we go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5.1 of the Code of Iowa to discuss real estate. I don't know, Rick, Rick always does this.
Just actually, whatever it says right there, what we, purchase or sale of real estate is what we intend to discuss, if that's what you'd like to put in the motion.
I meant to say, purchase or sale of real estate.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rousseau.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Rousseau, second by Ms. Wethel. And for the record, the attorney that we, that the city council will consult with on the matters to be discussed in closed session is city attorney Krenna Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We are in closed session.